Okay, I want to call us to order for our agenda meeting on May 3. Our invocation today is going to be from Senior Pastor Pete Williams from Adamsville Baptist Church. Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Chris Gurley, approval of amendments, and then adjustments of agenda. Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a couple of things we would like to add. One, I think Commissioner Williams has a resolution in honor of National Clerk's Week.
Yes.
And we apologize to our clerks for missing that, and I appreciate Commissioner Williams picking that up for us, so thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that will be seven?
That'll be seven, yes, sir. And then we also have, one of the things that we discussed at our agenda meeting on Tuesday was the possibility of looking at biweekly payrolls, and Allison has a memo that, have you already given it out?
I have, I don't know if we can review it now.
Yeah, we can, we can, do you want to go over it now, or?
Are we adding that to the?
Yeah, we would like to, if the Board has approval.
Where are we going to add it?
Consent or regular, whatever the Board so chooses.
So, is this? Let's go over it now.
Yeah, let's go over it before we start adding stuff.
Okay, so I gave you all the memo that is kind of detailing the reasons for the staff recommendation to recommend a biweekly payroll. So, just to give you a little bit of history, we have been monthly for as long as I think any of us can remember, and we have been moving forward per the Board's direction to go, to move to an automated timekeeping system. We have a great need for more electronic processes to become a little more efficient managing our time, managing our payroll. We really need to have consistent methodologies and policies across the board, and so we have been looking at that, reviewing that, and determining what would help us achieve those goals. And so, one of the things that we've looked at in, in going to a timekeeping system is how we pay people, and what do we think would be, as staff, the best way to, to pay people moving forward with the different types of pay that we have in the county. So, we don't pay, we don't have just one set type of pay in the county, we have some that are shift workers, we have eight-to-five folks, we have, you know, just a variety of pay types. And so, we have been working for, actually, years with our auditors to come up, they have come up with recommendations over the years that they feel like would help us best achieve these goals and avoid things like labor law violations and confusion amongst employees, and that would best help us meet all the federal and state regulations. So, that's a little bit of history. So, the, the recommendation that you have before you is to put a motion before you to allow us to work on a transition plan to move to biweekly payroll. We do not have a transition date at this time because we really need time to work with employees, we want to be able to educate them about the process and about what this is going to mean for them, we want to make sure we approach this in the best way possible that it benefits everyone. So, we do not have a transition date yet, what we would like to do is get direction from the Board to move forward with this, then we would come back to you once we have a transition date in place, and we would work with our auditors, our attorneys, management to make sure that we come up with the best date. So, just, I'm not going to read through this, but I do want to go over what we feel like are the benefits. One of the biggest benefits for this is that it will allow us to move to a pay period based on time actually worked. So, what I mean by that is we currently pay employees once a month on the 25th of the month, but we pay them for the entire month, meaning that they are basically advanced one week's wages. Now, that is, that is a, that is not a best practice, yes, we've been doing it for a long time, but it causes many, many issues. For one, if you have employees that terminate, or that run out of time, or that resign, you have, you have to try to get that money back, and it presents a problem, it's difficult at times. And so, this is one of the biggest benefits that we would like to see from it, is that we would pay employees for time actually worked. So, the way this would work is, let's say you worked this week and next week, then the following week, you would be paid for the two weeks prior to that. And so, we would be adjusting to more of what I would call a real-time pay basis. The second thing that I think this will help us with greatly is reconciliation of vacation time, sick time, and comp time accruals. So, right now, because we pay once a month, and because we advance people's pay for a week, their accruals are not accurate in a real-time basis, and it's usually the next month. And so, sometimes we have employees that are just, they really don't understand how much time they have, and that's understandable because of the way that we reflect those records. So, we do have the employee self-service portal now, that's a part of our unit software system, and it does allow them to access that, but it only gets adjusted once a month. So, if we move to biweekly, we would be able to adjust those records more frequently, employees would know on a more real-time basis what time they actually have, vacation, sick, and comp time, and it allows us to better track the records accurately. So, that's one of the other reasons. We also would like to take this opportunity to create a method of consistent timekeeping. So, even though we are going to a timekeeping system, we have a great need to have consistent timekeeping policies and documentation across the board, and this is a labor law must. So, one of the things that they look at when, you know, if they were to come in, or even when we're audited, is what is your documentation, what do your records say, because that's what they're going to go by. So, we have to be able to show that we apply policies consistently and fairly across the board, and so we do have a great need for that, we've, we've been working on them as we've gone, gone along over the years, but we don't have everybody on the same page with our timekeeping and our time sheets. So, this would give us a great opportunity to educate folks about how their pay is and how to document it. The next benefit is the 207K exemption for law enforcement. So, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this, this is, I think, specific to North Carolina, if I'm not mistaken, but what the 207K exemption is, it's actually for law enforcement and firefighters, but we, we don't have the firefighter piece, is it is a specific overtime law that applies to your law enforcement, and it's, it allows you, if you elect to do this, to pay a different way than you normally would for like an eight-to-five employee where you count overtime over 40 hours. And so, this exemption, it, it would allow us, right now, the way this exemption works for our Sheriff's Department is extremely confusing. It's confusing for our Sheriff's Office employees, we have a lot of Sheriff's Office employees that they don't, they don't fully understand the way we're paying because we pay once a month, and it doesn't line up with their shifts. And so, it's very hard to explain sometimes, and it's very hard to have them, you know, feel good about how they're being paid because it's hard to understand, and usually, a lot of times, the more simple it is, the more faith you have because you can figure it out yourself. So, it is, it's very complicated right now with employees like the Sheriff's Office, and we feel like if we could go to biweekly, it would nicely line up with this 207K exemption and how their hours are set, and we could give them a much better understanding of how their pay works. The last benefit I feel like, just based on, you know, discussions I've had with various employees over the years, is I feel like this is accommodating to our employees and to their budgets. It is difficult at times to only be paid once a month, and so, you know, if you're paid biweekly, you at least have some income coming in throughout the month, you can space your bills out a little bit better, so everything, because, I mean, you know, it, things happen during the month that you can't anticipate. And so, I feel like it gives employees more flexibility with their personal budgets, and then I feel like it's, it's sort of a more relevant way of paying our employees. We were on a webinar last week with, with the National Government Finance Officers Association, and they did a poll, and about 60% of those folks, municipalities and counties are on a biweekly payroll, about 12% are on a monthly payroll. So, we feel like that this is moving towards a more modern trend, I don't, you know, that's not the bill breaker, obviously, but I just feel like it gives us more flexibility, it would certainly run along well with the interim program because right now we're having to make manual modifications to that. So, if you have any questions, I know I've thrown a lot at you, but these are sort of the, the sort of quick things that I feel like would be real benefits to the employees and to the counties, but I'm wel, I'm welcome to ask, answer any questions you have.
Can I just have a comment? I think that, I think that it would be a good thing for the county, especially if other counties are already doing it, we don't want to lose employees to these other counties based on the fact that, hey, we're getting paid every two weeks. And I think also it'd help the community, when you have that extra income coming in, you can go and you can purchase, so I think it'd, it'd also help the tax base here more opposed to you wait till the last minute monthly to get, get your pay, and now you have to just do one thing only. So, I mean, I think it'd help.
Commissioner Gurley.
How many employees you going to have to make this work?
Well, right now, and I'm saying this not giving you a definitive answer, I think that we can do it with the current staff we have. It may require some temporary help just initially to get through, because we're going through a transition if we go through biweekly, but then timekeeping, we may have some, some temp staff there, but my Assistant Finance Director and I have really talked about this, we feel like we can absorb that, but I, I guess I reserve the right to come back to you because this is, this is a big change, this is not small, we've never done this before, but I, I feel like we can make it work with what we have.
So, will the employees input the information, I mean, is this?
Would they input the information? Well, with the timekeeping system, they would, so that is not being, that will be implemented after, if, if the Board chooses to go biweekly, we would implement biweekly payroll, and we would give you a transition date for that. It would most likely be at the beginning of a quarter because for our payroll taxes, it would just be a cleaner break, and then we would, in the meantime, we will be looking, we are already looking at timekeeping systems and setting up demos with vendors, but that would happen a little bit later after the biweekly payroll is established. And so, then in the timekeeping process, yes, they would be entering their time.
Okay, so, isn't the supervisor responsible for signing time sheets now?
Yes.
So, does that become an issue?
No, sir, it does not. What, what do you mean by, does it become an issue?
I'm just, I'm just wondering why we're doing biweekly, I'm just, how much, how much would a software cost, you think?
So, the software is separate from the biweekly, the?
Do I know?
The software is separate from going biweekly, so what, the Board has already voted on a timekeeping system, and, and that's, that's in the CIP, I say you've already voted on it, it was in your, or Goals and Retreats, and it's been in the CIP for, I think about three years, does that sound right? So, right now, we're estimating around $350,000, but we've got to do, we've got demos set up.
But that's for the timekeeping, not for the payroll?
That's for the timekeeping, and that's separate from this, so this is about, this is just going biweekly with our current software, we probably will have to make some modifications to our current software system, I don't know that that's going to be a material amount, but we've got to, we've got to reach out to them and find out what that cost would be, I don't, I don't think it's going to be significant.
So, and I'm just running some quick numbers, based on $30,000, you're talking about getting paid basically 26 times a year, because there's basically, there's 52 weeks, there's really, if you base it on four week months, there's 13 months in a year.
Right.
So, that means that the person that's making $30,000 is basically going to get $200 less a month, or $200, $100 less a week.
No, that's.
A hundred dollars less every two weeks, I mean, I'm sorry.
No, we're not changing what they're getting paid, it's just changing how often they're getting paid.
You got to get, you got to change it.
No, if you're getting paid $1,000 a month, instead of getting paid $1,000 one time, you're getting paid in $500 increments, two times a month.
But you're getting paid 26 times a year.
Right, but your salary stays the same. So, if you're getting paid $50,000 for the year, it's, that $50,000 is still the same, you're just dividing it up over 26 pay periods. We are not altering anyone's pay for this.
Okay, just to make sure I'm understanding this right, so you're saying $30,000 a year divided by 12 is $2,500 a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that would be 1250 every two weeks.
Right.
So, $30,000 divided by 26 pay periods is going to be $1,153 every two weeks.
That is correct.
Okay, but they're.
But you're going to get paid the same.
You're going to get paid the same, so you're not, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, we're not switching to an, we pay people a set salary for the year, that's what they agree to, so we're not paying them like based on hours. Right now, the way it works is they are paid, it says on their paycheck, 174 hours a month. They are not getting paid for 174 hours each month because that math doesn't work out. Our Sheriff's Office is a very good example, they are on a 168 time period, but they are, they are getting paid a set salary for the year, that salary is not changing, they are not going to get paid.
There's some months that you're going to get paid three times.
Right.
Once a quarter, you get paid three times.
Right, so, what I'm getting at is you got people that's got things on bank draft on the 25th, I mean, this is going to be, I mean, somebody that's making, I can see this could be a hardship on some of our employees.
So, this is ultimately a Board decision, we are presenting it as a staff recommendation, I mean, this is ultimately in your hands, we are giving you the information that we have that we feel like is the best way to move forward as a county, for employees and the county, that is ultimately up to, up to you all to decide, I'm not going to, I don't want to, I don't want to engage in a debate because that is your decision.
I'm not debating, not just yet.
I just want to give you the best, the best information possible.
The thought process that, that we had is, we felt like in, in looking at the process and, and the Board's direction on timekeeping, that this is a first step, and this is the, and again, we don't have a date at this time, I believe with the, the summer internship program that we had, that, that really kind of pushed us to say, hey, they needed, you know, in talking with Commissioner Williams, they, kids couldn't wait 30 days for getting paid, so that kind of pushed us to go to two weeks for the summer internship program. So then, when we started looking at that, we started looking at, well, if we are looking at long-term, a pace, you know, a clock system, this would be a first step, why not go ahead and look at the implementation now? And the thought process is, if we let people know, there's not a date set on this, so the date is, we would come back to the Board and say, there's a date way in the future that, that we're working towards, and we will tell you that exact date, but this way people can start getting prepared now, instead of saying, oh, next week, we're changing, and it's two weeks, and you got to change your bills.
But you see what I'm saying, every, every two weeks, you're going, they're going to be $100 off.
But then.
For two weeks, they're going to be $100 off, the next two weeks, $100 off the next two, you're going to keep on it until one quarter, then they're going to catch up. I mean, that could be directly, that could be $800 in the, in the red before they catch up that one time. And I'm just saying, I mean, it's, I'm just seeing.
Mr. Ancock, you've been very patient here, let me.
Well, Commissioner Gurley stole two of my questions.
Sorry.
But, that's all right, if the questions were asked. You said this is a Board decision?
Yes, sir.
This don't need to be a Board decision, we need to know what our employees want. If they want two weeks, I'm all for it, if they don't want two weeks, I'm not for it. I mean, this, this, ultimately, we got to make the decision, but we, I want some input from the employees, I want to know what the employees want.
Okay, I think there was, I did, I did have a couple of questions about how other municipalities are paying, the city of Goldsboro is biweekly, town of Mount Olive is weekly, Fremont is?
Biweekly.
Biweekly, okay.
Stanburg's biweekly, Urican was biweekly.
Okay, so I wasn't sure about all municipalities, I think Mr. Hardison, maybe you could ask me that, someone asked me that. Yes, I mean, however you want to proceed is fine with me, obviously, this is a staff recommendation, I do want to make one point about all of this, we are advancing pay for time not worked, that is one of the biggest issues we need to address in all of this. So, whether you choose to go biweekly, or whether you choose to remain once a month, we need to be able to work on that. We do not pay for goods until they are delivered, so we do not need to be paying for time that's not worked.
But that can be adjusted in actual, where you start your time in the month, can't it?
Yes, and, and that would be an adjustment, so you would have to move the date back that we pay, which is going to be for a month, it's going to be a decrease in pay for employees until they can get true-up the next month.
I mean, our work week goes from Thursday to Wednesday, and they get paid on Friday, I mean, that's right, we pay ours about a week.
Right.
But I mean, I'm just saying, by the month, all you got to do is just start it on the third week, and end it up, and you're still getting paid on the 25th.
Right, so if you're doing once a month, though, you're going to have a, I do want you to be aware, I want employees to be aware, there would be a one-month true-up period where they would have less pay in their paycheck, and so, that is, one of the things we felt like was beneficial in achieving this not paying employees for time not worked, is if you go to biweekly, they're at least getting a paycheck to, you know, on that third week, they're not having to go a month with just less pay. So, there, there are a lot of pieces to this, and however, I mean, we will proceed however you'd like us to, it's just, as the Finance Director, I feel like I should tell you that we are paying people for time not yet worked, so that, I feel like, regardless if you choose to stay monthly or go biweekly, that needs to be addressed.
Allison, how does it affect your accruals and stuff and payroll?
Well, so, right now, our accruals are one month behind, and so, we, because those do not get turned in until, like, if you're in the month of May like we are now, those accruals do not get turned in until June, which do not get reflected until your June 25th payroll. So, that, that is one of the benefits listed with comp time, sick time, and vacation time, that this would allow us to have a sort of quicker turnaround on all of those, and it, and it's more informative for employees because they have a better idea of where they stand with their time off.
So, we go from day one to day 30?
Or 31, yes.
Or whatever, okay.
All right, any other questions?
Where do you want this placed on the agenda?
Or not on the agenda, where, whatever you want.
It was a pleasure of the Board.
I'd like to put it on the agenda.
I think Wayne's idea is a good idea.
It's a good idea, but the thing here is that we are representing the county, and we need to do the best thing for the county, and moving to the biweekly pay period is better than what we have right now. Simple.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I mean. Can we do this? Can we do this? Can we postpone this for two weeks and allow them to get some input from our department heads in regards to our employees?
We could have IT set up a survey.
We could do a poll.
If you want to do a survey.
Let's do it, let's do a poll.
Okay, let's postpone this for a couple of weeks and get some input from our employees. And put the pros and cons in it, and my, my biggest issue is that $100 less out of their check.
And for the first quarter, you're right, it's, it's, it's going to be an adjustment, but once you flush through that first quarter, then it's going to be better for all new employees, it's, you know, there's some great benefits.
Yeah, there is an adjustment period for, for, however you make, because we are advancing pay for time not worked, regardless of which way you go, there will be an adjustment period because basically you have fronted employees a week's worth of pay.
I've gone through this twice in, in my lifetime, and you do adjust to it.
Yeah, yeah.
And as to Commissioner Gurley's, it's cameo role transition.
I feel confident that the employees is going to want to go to two weeks, but I want their input.
Okay, we can serve.
I want to know, I want to know where they stand.
I volunteered IT for something, I think they could probably set up a survey pretty easily for employees, I don't think that would be.
Here are no objections, let's postpone this for two weeks, let's get some input, and then we'll bring it up on our next stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other adjustment that we do have, in talking with the Chairman, I, I think the Board got an email with respect to the discussion of subscriptions for EMS, and we would like to have, after our regular meeting, have a workshop after that to discuss subscriptions with EMS, with our EMS Director Dave Cutterback, so that will be immediately preceding our regular meeting.
Okay.
And we do have a closed session as well.
We do have a closed session.
And we have a, those are the minutes, sir, I'm so sorry, in this economic development thing from law.
All right, Appointment Committee, we are going to have something on appointments.
Yeah, oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, one other thing we do need to add is a resolution for Project Berry, it is an application for the North Carolina Department of Commerce for the rural division building reuse project for up to $500,000 for Project Berry, so we have that resolution as well, we'd like to put that under consent.
Under consent?
Yes, sir.
Item seven?
Yes, sir.
Number eight?
Eight. What was seven?
The proclamation.
No, I thought we had.
Seven is special presentations, and then, seven under consent.
Under consent, under seven, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And then, Carol also.
Wait, wait a minute, that's, our special presentations.
Under seven here is going to be the Clerk's proclamation, and then seven, under consent agenda, is going to be the resolution on Project Berry.
Okay, but the, number one, under special presentations, am I going to have a copy of that resolution?
Yeah.
You need a copy of it?
Here it comes. Thanks, sir. But also, under consent, and Allison will go over this as well, Carol just handed you out Budget Amendment 458, so Allison will go over that, but we're going to put that under consent as well, so.
You're just adding that to the budget amendments?
Yes, sir.
For the goal.
But the action item will be the resolution for the building reuse for Project Berry. And then, again, the workshop after our regular meeting to discuss EMS subscriptions.
All right, we're going to go back now, again, we got Appointment Committee, then we're having a public hearing to receive public comments on ratifying two agreements with Wayne County Development Alliance and City of Goldsboro.
Mr. Chair, we, we missed the, all the special presentations.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. First is motion to approve National Law Enforcement Week and National Peace Officers' Memorial Day Proclamation, and Vice Chairman Ancock will read that.
Okay.
Second would be motion to approve 2022 EMS Week Proclamation, and our EMS Director, Dave Cutterback, will be here for that.
Okay.
Number three, motion to approve Mental Health Month Proclamation, as read by Emily Peacock, she'll be here for that. Number four, motion to approve Drug Port Month Proclamation, as read by Audra Hatta. And then, number five, presentation by Lakeisha Peaton on the Vision of David Program. Number six, update on Wayne Executive Jetport Projects by Jason Elliott with W.K. Dixon, and he'll be here to discuss all the activities and projects at the airport. And then, number seven is the Clerk's Week Proclamation by Commissioner Williams. Okay? And then we have Appointment Committee.
What was number eight under special presentations?
Uh, no, no eight.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
It's under consent, okay.
It's under consent.
Okay. And then Appointment Committee, and then number nine is a public hearing to receive public comments on a proposal to ratify two agreements with the Wayne County Development Alliance and the city of Goldsboro, and again, this is for the Goldsboro Industrial Campus and also for the Shell Building.
The resolution, I mean, the agenda only had one, I believe, for consent, so my apologies, here's the second one, these are the older agreements that.
So, both of these agreements have already been approved, we just did not have a public hearing at that time.
Yes, sir.
There was an oversight on our part. So, once we have the public hearing, are we, do we need a motion to ratify those?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and who will be making that motion?
I will.
Okay.
And then after the public hearing, we'll go to consent agenda, and number one, Budget Amendments, and I'll turn to Allison.
Okay. First budget amendment is for the Register of Deeds Office, they are requesting, I'll wait till she gets there, you're welcome. So, your first budget amendment is for the Reg. to ensure that they have enough to get them through the rest of the fiscal year. They were not able to reallocate funds from their budget, so they're asking to appropriate fund balance. Your next budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office in the amount of $20,000. They are asking to appropriate funds for accreditation software. This is, this is to purchase an early warning system. There's a detailed memo behind your budget amendment detailing what exactly this early warning system will do, but it is a part of their accreditation program, which I believe was one of the board goals. It is $20,000, and we do have enough funds, um, we have collected at the time of this budget amendment just a little over $20,000 in additional, um, real estate taxes, so rather than using fund balance for, um, an insignificant amount, I appropriated additional revenue.
So is this the part that's added to the, um, program that, um, G.I.S. or that Elliott put together, is that?
I think it's separate.
It's separate, okay.
This is specifically tied to the accreditation piece. It says early warning system.
Okay.
It looks like it's actually a requirement that's been put into place from the memo. Am I stating that right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can you have the chair come up?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, good morning, thank you. Under Senate Bill, uh, that was introduced this past, uh, December, um, we have to start tracking now certain things that are reported to us by, uh, the public against officers, or if an officer has certain criteria that he, uh, meets for an arrest, then we have to start keeping a track of it and report that, so this is what that system does. Actually, this was in a CIP, uh, for this coming year, but because of, we're trying to get this thing implemented as soon as possible, it, it takes about six months to get it implemented with the company, and so I had asked, instead of waiting, let's go ahead and get it implemented now, and it'll still take about three months from now for it to be implemented, but it's moved that CIP out and bring it into this year if we had the funds.
So basically, when your, the officers go to an incident, it actually tracks if it, if it's classified under this?
If there's certain reportable things, like if they are involved in a crash, if they pull their, uh, weapon in a use of force situation, things of that nature, it tracks.
Oh, gosh. So it's not like a Warner system out in, like, Goldsboro's got for?
No, no, no.
Okay, got it, thanks, sir.
Chair, I'll have you up here, just a quick update on the accreditation program, how's it going?
It, it is coming along, but it takes a lot, we have to review every policy, and we're rewriting every policy to be sure it's consistent with the accreditation. Not that it's inconsistent, but there are certain criteria you have to meet and bullet points to meet the accreditation standards, so we're having to rewrite every policy.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And Chair, thank you for the work that you're doing and moving toward that, because you're right, you're having to review all of your policies.
Yes.
In that process.
That is correct.
Thanks for spending the time necessary to do that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Your next budget amendment is for the Solid Waste Department, um, no, yes, okay, for the Solid Waste Department. They are requesting additional funds for their sewer line item and scrap tire disposal. They have, um, it says their lead check production is directly affected by the amount of rainfall that landfill receives. They are anticipating additional revenues to offset this rather than using fund balance because they do believe they'll overcollect for the year.
That's the solid waste fund balance, right?
Yes, sir, it is. But they're not, they're not anticipating fund balance, they're actually anticipating, um, additional revenues.
But we, I was just...
It is the solid waste fund, yes, it's separate.
Right, well, evidently, they're optimistic that the drought is going to go be over. Okay.
All right, you have a budget amendment for the Register of Deeds Office in the amount of $2,000. They are asking to, they have a grant that they can apply for, I believe it's through the state. They have the ability to receive, um, a match of $2,000 if the county will agree to put up $2,000, and it could even be more than that, but right now, what the state is guaranteeing is $2,000 if they apply for this.
What, what kind, I mean, what's the grant for, I mean, what?
It is, um, it states that it's in funding from the Automation Enhancement and Preservation Fund Line Item, so this would have to do with, like, microfilming, um, and indexing their records online.
Okay, okay. I'd scroll one more page, I would say. Okay.
All right, you have a budget amendment for the 2122 Debt Project Fund. So this is for specifically the DSS and help facilities. We are requesting to move $60,980 to that fund. These monies will be reimbursed once we do secure the debt financing, so we will reimburse the general fund for this. It's broken up between, um, two line items. The first is, um, two amendments with mostly architects for, um, additional services for various surveys, and the second is to conduct a wetland stream delineation, um, confirmation. The second piece of this, $15,500, is for a recombination plat that the county requested, um, to be done, and this is on 800 Corporate Drive.
Okay, any question?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Allison, on the fund balances appropriations and everything, you know, we have a tendency to need and use these, is there any way, according to your system, unit system, when you have, when you used a fund balance, can you put an asterisk side of it what the available fund balance is remaining after you used a fund balance?
Yes, well, what I do is I track it separately because, um, it's all anticipated uses of fund balance, but I will typically prepare an update for you separately, um, and I will do that probably in the next meeting or two where I give you what I, what we've used and what I anticipate it to be at the end of the fiscal year, but yes, ma'am, we do track that.
Okay.
All right, your next budget amendment is for the Facilities Department totaling $10,000. They are requesting to reallocate funds within their budget for additional repairs and maintenance of equipment to get them through the rest of the fiscal year. You have a budget amendment for the Comprehensive, um, Opioid Program. This was then the detention center, if you recall, that received, um, I believe it was a little shy of $1 million over a three-year period. It was called the COSAT grant, I believe. And so what we are doing is just an accounting entry to better track these line items. Now that they are in the midst of that grant, they have a better idea of what exactly their funds will be spent on, so we are requesting to reallocate the grant funds according to what they feel like the grants programs will be. You have a budget amendment for Social Services in the amount of $1,025,370. This is just a reallocation from the direct service line item. We have required, created a separate, uh, code for them for special assistance so that they can track that a little better within the software system, so we are requesting to reallocate it to that new accounting code. You have another budget amendment for Social Services, it's for the same reasons that I just stated, $30,068. However, this one is going to be for special adoptions, so they are required to track that separately as well, so we've created a project code to be able to do that a little better. We have a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Office totaling $20,000. This is a reallocation, and I'm sorry, it's for the detention center. It's a reallocation within their current budget. This is to cover a shortfall in the inmate clothing and linen's line item. Your next budget amendment is for the Library. We are requesting to move $68,987 from a line item called contra account salaries to regular time pay. This original account was set up as part of a grant, um, however, it needs to be reallocated to better reflect what our regular part-time pay salaries are, so we are just moving it from one line item to the other one. Okay, you have a budget amendment for the Jetport in the amount of $62,900. This is to anticipate additional revenues and the associated expenditures for abgas sales. They have exceeded their, their budgeted line item, but they've also, um, anticipated exceeding the revenues, so they are asking to anticipate additional revenues to offset this increase. And then we had a walk-on budget amendment. You have a physical copy of that for Cooperative Extension for Age. They are requesting to move $6,900 from non-capital furniture and fixtures and equipment to capital outlet equipment. This is to, um, appropriate funds for the replacement of a plotter printer, a large plotter printer. Uh, this is used for daily programming needs, and they have tried to have it repaired, and it's no longer repairable, so they are taking it from their existing budget.
Okay.
That's all I have for you.
Any questions for Allison?
I have a question for Barry pertaining to the airport. Can you explain a little bit about the fuel, and I know it's kind of, it's kind of laid out pertaining to, we had a lot of air, air, air travel there. Can you elaborate a little bit?
It's Brandon Gray, not Barry. That's Barry, this is Brandon.
Brandon, yes, yeah, 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 sorry, yes, yeah, sorry, yeah. So Brandon's not here, yeah, yeah.
But I can tell you that they have sold more abgas, so therefore, they had to have a budget amendment to accommodate for that, so business is good.
Right, and, and I think because of the fuel price increase as well, that caused our expense to increase, but our revenue's up with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, next, we have, uh, motion to approve the Windy Hill Subdivision, Section 2 Final Plat, as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board, and Barry, too. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, Windy Hill, Section 2, as mentioned, is a final plat. There are 18 proposed lots on Swinton Drive. Swinton Drive is a dead end, um, it's actually the, on the west side of 117 Bypass, it's kind of the other side of Cable Alert Road, um, which is on the east side of 117, but it does come off of Club Knolls Road. Like I said, it is a dead-end road, they are doing roadfront lots there, so there were no improvements in terms of new streets, but it is a DOT maintained street, so, um, so that is a good thing for future residents as well. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Barry? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Um, next, uh, is a motion to award the contract for Cisco Switch replacement to Brooks Network Services, as recommended by, uh, our purchasing manager Noel Woods. Noel is here, we did go through the bid process, um, if you have any questions, Ryan is here as well, um, um, they can explain it much better than I even will try to fumble through, uh, Cisco replacement switch issues.
Just a brief explanation in regards to what this switch is, since it's so expensive. Good morning.
Good morning. So this was put in, this is in our budget that we budget for this year, um, this is, we have several switches that are just network interfaces around the different various buildings, connecting those buildings together, uh, with, you know, we have that fiber backbone, it connects those up and allows us to put as many computers as we need to in each building, so some of these switches, uh, are in need of replacement, so this is just doing that. And because of the amount and the cost, we ended up having to bid it out.
Got you, any questions? Okay.
Thanks for the chairs, by the way.
What's that, I'm sorry.
Thanks for the chairs. He said, "Thanks for the chairs."
Oh. No comment.
Then number, number four, motion to award the contract for Maraki Wireless Equipment with licensing to Trace III, as recommended by purchasing manager Noel Woods.
Yep. And this was in, this was in CIP, uh, for this past, this year, um, and this is kind of the same thing, all of our wireless in the county, uh, is out of service, aging, and we don't have any, uh, replacement equipment for that, so this is, if you are connecting with your phone, laptop, anything it may be, this is what you're using, so we're just replacing those around the county. And because of the cost, we obviously had to go out to bid.
So this replaces all of them?
This replaces all of them, except the maximum center, because the maximum center's on the equipment we're already going to, so that'll connect everything up, it'd be really nice.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Chair?
And number...
Thank you very much.
And number five, motion to award the contract for Security Services to Strategic Security Corporation, uh, as recommended by purchasing manager Noel Woods. Uh, this is to look at our security here at the courthouse and also, uh, the COB as well as the boarding building. Uh, again, it is a, a higher cost, however, we did go through an interview process, we interviewed, I think, seven different, no, what was it, seven?
We interviewed everyone.
We interviewed everybody, uh, but we felt like with the training and experience that, that we felt like we, we felt, and the sheriff was a part of the process, and we appreciated the sheriff sitting in that, uh, that, um, uh, security, strategic security would be a good fit for Wayne County.
So that's three buildings?
Yes, sir.
Three buildings.
And again, it is higher, but one of the things they said is they were paying, um, a higher rate, and we felt like to get a quality security guard, we needed the higher rate, uh, with better training, so...
And the only question I would have, and that would be, um, of our county attorney, and that is, we can pick someone that is not a little better.
Yes, sir, services.
Because of service.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that we're... But again, I, I do want, I know it's a, a higher cost, but I want to let you know we did vet that very well, and, uh, Chip was on the interview committee, Noel, myself, the sheriff, Major Thaxton, and Captain Rock was on it, so...
How many employees is that?
It is seven through the day. If I'm not mistaken.
Actually, I think it's six, because there's, there's two here, um, there will be two at the Health Department, one at the boarding building, and then there will be one supervisor that robes overall.
Okay, basically, we're going from no service to a service.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, you might want to tell it like this.
Uh, then numbers. Then number six is motion to approve the Wayne County ABC Board use of our Wayne County travel policy, and under general statute, they have to ask our permission to use our travel policy, so they're asking that permission to continue, uh, that, uh, process. And then we added, uh, number seven, which is a resolution for the building reuse for Project Barry.
Okay.
Then we'll have public comments, county managers report, uh, board committees, board commissioners committee reports, again, a closed session. Uh, then we will go into a workshop to discuss the subscription with EMS, and then we'll adjourn.
Do we need AMs, then? Only call the, um, work session board, if we talk about something else besides that force dealing with EMS. Are we limited in regards to what we can discuss in our workshop? No, we have not adjourned, is that correct?
Yep.
That's correct. All right, and, uh, with that in mind, it looks like it's going to be a long morning. You said short. You say short, I know, but it, it looks like it's become long. So are we having lunch brought in?
Yes, we are.
We are, so we will have lunch today. All right, any, uh, any other comments or, uh, questions on our agenda? Having none, we're going to go into recess for a few minutes before our nine o'clock. Okay? Thank you.